Public Forum, this meeting will be livestreamed. The prayer of counsel will now be read by the acting chief executive officer, Dr Eddie Jack.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors. Acknowledgement of conduct. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land from which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, Cabo Gull and the clan of the Daragh Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawal and Daragh Nations. Affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. A prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors, the staff of council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
We just don't have councillors Balut and the deputy mayor Conib on line at the moment. Everybody was online.
All right, well, let's move on.
No, sorry, I don't think anyone could hear you for a minute there.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you're asking for confirmation, I'll move that way, but I have a lot of trouble hearing.
So, sorry, ma'am, I'm not sure if it's everyone else, but I can't hear you.
Yeah, same. I don't think anyone can hear you.
No, if can only.
Yeah, it's cutting out quite a bit.
I can't hear her.
I heard my name and that was about it.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
That's much better, yeah. Thank you, I changed my wifi. Wish my figure was as easy. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum and we have one submission submitted by Ms Andrews and it relates to the Liverpool Museum and that will become part of the minutes.
Before you go further, Madam Mayor, I've got a declaration of interest. If you pulled it out before and I couldn't hear it, I'm sorry.
I did, I did. No, I did, I'm sorry. If anybody, yes, councillor.
Yes, item E-Gro 06. I've had dealings over the years with the various parties referred to in that item. I'm going to call it non pecuniary, non-significant. I don't intend to leave the room. And if it helps, that's a carry on from a previous item from about a month ago and nearly all the councillors declared conflicts.
Okay, thank you. Any other declarations?
Yes, ma'am, I have two.
Yes, councillor.
The first one, the first one is pecuniary, INF 01. I have interest in property which appeared in this report, so I will obviously be leaving. And then the second one, similar to councillor Shelton, carry over for E-Gro 06.
Thank you. Councillor Ayad?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mine is regarding Conf 07. Clayton Utes. My first cousin is a very senior person there. I just wanted to put that out there. It's non-pecuniary, less than significant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Ma'am, I will declare an interest in the business resilient grants, E-Gro 06, similar to everybody else.
Okay, thank you councillor.
Hi, mate.
Effective and I will stay in the room.
That's fine. Councillor Haggerty?
Yeah, why not? E-Gro 06 business resilient grants, we all claimed a conflict of interest last time. Mine is non-pecuniary, less than significant. I've had dealings with some of the businesses that were awarded previously.
Might be best if we ask what councillors aren't declaring on E-Gro 06.
Madam Mayor, also if I could be included in that too.
Yes, I, I.
Thank you.
All right, all right.
I'll jump on the bandwagon as well. E-Gro 06, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I will also declare the same thing, non-pecuniary and non-significant on E-Gro 06 because the businesses are known to me.
We have declared it before, so should we declare it again?
Yeah, well, it's a separate meeting councillor. So, yes, it would be.
In this case, well, I will declare the same things.
Thank you. Councillor Deed, E-Gro 06. Okay, any other items?
Just before we go on, I know I couldn't hear it, but just the minutes were.
By councillor Sheldon and seconded by councillor Caliander.
Okay, yep.
Thank you. All right. Items on the agenda. First item is on page 50.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Shelton, seconded. Sorry, who was that?
Councillor Ayad.
Thank you councillor Deed. Any opposition?
Can I just?
Hold on, councillor Haggerty speaking.
Can we also, I note, I think this is David Maguire's last sort of official duty. So could we also add that we thank him for his hard work and service in the, you know, throughout his time at council?
Yes, certainly. It's the second I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
Thank you. There was another speaker.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just a question. I seem to remember that on previous reports, there was a financial aspect of it, a report on the finances of it. Was that for an end of a year report or something, or does that not form a part of this report?
I will ask the acting CEO to make a comment on that.
Like it, Madam Mayor. The previous report would have been an annual report. I'll have to take on notice if the financial aspect should be part of this half annual mid-year report. But I'd be very surprised if Mr Maguire, knowing his diligence, had omitted that, but I'm happy to take that on notice.
Thank you. Yes councillor Caliander.
This can be taken on notice, but I was wondering if at some stage we could just get some insight into how the COVID situation may have impacted the work of the internal ombudsman, whether that's added to their workload, whether that has, you know, shifted the type of duties, type of responsibilities they have, that sort of thing. So like I said, happy to take it on notice, but would be good to get some insight into that.
I'll ask the acting CEO to follow that up councillor.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is on page 55.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I've got some alterations to that.
Yes councillor. What's your, what's your motion?
Let me just read through my notes, I'm terribly sorry. We're up to CEO 02, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
No, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm, that wasn't the one I was thinking.
Okay, no worries, no worries. Would someone like to move and second the media policy?
I'll move that way.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments? I'll put it.
No, I've got some alterations to that, I'm sorry, I am within that one, that is what.
Okay, well, this will now become an amendment councillor because it's been formally moved and seconded. What are your amendments? Or we might have the foreshadowed.
A change to 4.17, which reads now the mayor may nominate another councillor to act in the official council spokesperson for an issue. And I'll read it out. In the event that the mayor not being available, the deputy mayor is the spokesperson for council. And in the event that the topic is the result of a motion being put and moved by a councillor, that councillor should be acknowledged in the media report that includes the motion and the council meeting date.
Thank you. As the mover and second, I'm happy to have that as an amendment.
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll have to treat it as a foreshadowed motion councillor.
Well, I'll put it up as a foreshadowed motion.
No worries, just hold it, hold it there. Councillor Haggerty, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think, I understand that the intention of councillor Rhodes's motion, but I think sometimes that's impractical. And then other times, I think, ma'am, that's, that's what you do do. You know, as we saw with the Hoxton Park thing initially, you know, the people that are sort of known for pushing these things, sort of get involved in them. And, you know, a little bit later, I was actually going to suggest that in relation to councillor Caliander's motion about the World Cup, if that, if that motion gets up, that I was going to suggest that the female members of council do a bit of media and us bush head blokes take a back seat. So I think, I don't think the media, I guess what I'm saying is the media policy doesn't need to be too prescriptive, that there is a chain of command and I think it's quite clear what that chain of command is, that the mayor is the spokesperson for council, they're not available, the deputy mayor is, and if they're not available, then the mayor will choose the most appropriate person. And I think that covers what the intention of what councillor Rhodes is trying to get at.
Thank you councillor. Someone like to speak against that motion?
Yes, I will speak against that motion, Madam Mayor. I appreciate what the councillor has said, but I think that my reading of 4.17, I think that it is very important that the charter does have very clearly defined outlines. I don't think that it is something that you do ad hoc. And my motion is supportive of the general line of command. If the mayor is not available, then it is the deputy mayor who steps into that position. That is, you know, the deputy mayor's position to do that sort of thing. And it makes more common sense for it to be clearly defined in the charter, what does happen if the mayor is not available. To put up anybody, the problem that we've got is that, you know, it could be misunderstood that somebody thinks, oh, well, I'm the person who's been nominated by the mayor. Whereas this way, we know if the mayor is not available, then it will be the person. And the fact that the other part of the motion, which was, in the event that the topic is the result of a motion being put by a particular councillor, this was to go on to that amendment that we haven't got written there. So it was, in the event that the topic is the result of a motion being put by a particular councillor, that councillor must be acknowledged in the media report that includes the motion and the date of the council meeting. Now, that is very descriptive of what should be in a charter. The other way is sort of like just making it up as you go along. But this is clearly, and it is doing what councillor Haggerty suggested, but it, but it, no, I don't have an echo. I don't have the else on at this end, so is there a problem? Will I?
Your sound has been difficult councillor.
I'll read out the, the reason why I am talking against the motion is because I think that it is not specific, and I think a charter has to be very specific. I don't think it's specific for the mayor to nominate different spokespeople, I think that is going to be confusing. And I think that the deputy mayor has to have, you know, the significance of his or her position as being the deputy mayor recognised, and it should go down in order of command. Now, I agree with councillor Haggerty that the, in that councillor should be given a, you know, an opportunity to be able to talk about things that they know most about, but I think that should be done also by the mayor or the deputy mayor, who is the spokesperson. We must have clearly defined a spokesperson. And that in those situations, it would be acknowledged in the media report that so-and-so councillor moved a motion at the meeting of such and such, and then the topic and the normal media procedure then follows. To me, that is good policy. So I, the reason why I'm talking against councillor Haggerty's motion is because it is not clearly defined. And I believe that the amendment to 4.1.7 that I have worded would clearly define the situation better.
Thank you councillor, is any other speakers for the motion?
Just a question, ma'am, if I can.
Certainly councillor.
Whilst I agree with the sentiments and it is a question of councillor Rhodes, the Low Government Act, can we play around with the wording of who the spokesperson is and what the line of command is?
No.
Then if that is the response, unfortunately, we got no choice but to support the current motion the way it is.
Can I reassure councillors that I do use a lot of common sense? The Act is extremely clear. The deputy mayor is acknowledged in the civic policy as being the person that speaks for the council if the mayor's unavailable. And what we have currently meets all the requirements that the OLG has put out. So our policy is set down from what the OLG has suggested.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, certainly councillor.
Deputy mayor's role?
The deputy mayor's role is to be spokesperson of the council if the mayor is unavailable.
And that's what I'm suggesting.
Councillor, I'm not going to debate it with you. Thank you. We have any other speakers for?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll speak for the motion. There seems to be some confusion.
You just spoke against it councillor, you can't speak for it.
Sorry, I was speaking for my own motion.
No, you can't speak for that yet, it hasn't come up. Okay, so we have had one speaker for, one speaker against, we're now for another speaker for. Anybody, you have the right of reply councillor Haggerty?
Yeah, just a quick one, as you beat me to the punch, which is the, that chain of command that councillor Rhodes spoke of is in the civic policy. So, yeah, if the mayor's unavailable, the deputy mayor covers it, so that's covered in the civic policy. I get her point about that the policy needs to be specific, but there is such a thing as something being too specific. Case in point, we've all put motions up, almost, you know, a few of us have put motions up about things like public transport, small business, feral cats, koalas, it's, you know, sort of who's the go-to person when it comes to those topics, given a number of councillors have supported them in the past. And I'll just make the point that regardless of which councillor puts forward a motion, once it's passed by council, it's a motion of council, not a, not a motion of a councilor. So it becomes the general policy of council. So I, I think, as I said, I appreciate the sentiment and I think that the spirit is there both in this policy and in the civic policy. And I think to date, the mayor has acted in that spirit. So I think we leave it as it is, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor. The debate is over councillor Rhodes, the right of reply has been taken, no, you can't have any more questions and you can't debate.
The motion as it's been recorded, the foreshadowed motion is being recorded.
Madam, your foreshadowed motion doesn't come forward as yet until the original motion is dealt with. The original motion has not been dealt with yet, so yours has not come forward.
Can I correct wording in the foreshadowed?
Well, we can fix that if we get to that, okay? Thank you. So I'd like the sheet, George, that we have for the voting.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, if I may, I've just joined the meeting, I had some issues connecting. If I may just understand what's going on.
We're up to item CEO 02 and we're just about to vote on adopting the media policy, which is in on page 55 of your document. The debate has been closed and we're just about to vote. So I might be better if I just say those who oppose the motion, councillor, speak up if you oppose the motion, we'll tick you off, that might be better.
Councillor Rhodes.
Thank you.
Councillor Hall.
Councillor Hall, anybody else? Thank you, I declare that the vote is carried and the foreshadowed motion does not come forward, thank you. The next item is on page 73 of your booklet. Sorry, who was that?
Councillor Ayad.
Thank you. Thank you councillor, you're moving that?
Seconding that ma'am.
Thank you. Right, any discussion? No?
Just, just a quick thank you to staff mayor through these times, they, Julie and her team have done a wonderful job and it should be acknowledged, thank you.
Totally agree with you.
Madam Mayor, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
As councillor Hachidi said, I am for one glad to have people such as Julie Scott on board who have worked remarkably to support the backbone of our local economy slash state slash national, small business. Very proud, very honoured that we have played an important role in supporting mums and dads, hardworking people such as small business. Well done to staff and of course particularly Julie Scott. And congratulation to everyone that worked on that for that matter.
How about we write to the staff, the mayor writes to the staff and congratulates them on behalf of the council in addition to the courage.
Fully second that, Madam Mayor.
Good, good idea.
Okay, thank you. I gather there's no opposition, so I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next item's on page 73.
Couple of questions, ma'am?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Thank you for the charter. What happens to, through you to the relevant person? Does it make, is it prudent that we nominate councillors to go on this committee? Do we now call for expressions of interest from the community? What happens once this is now done?
I will ask the acting CEO for comments.
Mr Moore?
Yeah, through you, through the CEO. The next step is to call for expressions of interest councillor, and we'll move swiftly on doing that. In the charter which is attached to the report, the, the approach is that councillors are not members of this committee, instead we're looking for community representatives who have a particular interest in companion animals, but councillors are able to participate in or join, attend rather, the committee meetings. But that's all set out in the charter which is attached to the report. But the next step is an expression of interest.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make changes to.
Can I?
Hold on a moment councillor Rhodes, councillor Chitty has the floor.
I think it's pretty much what councillor Rhodes was going to do, what I'd like to see, and if there's any issues, Mr Moore, let me know. Is there any issues with the councillor or the mayor being chair of this committee?
Through the CEO, I don't see any issues with that. I think the approach that's been taken is simply because it was thought that, you know, the staff involved day to day with companion animals would be the best place, people to, to run this committee. But no, I don't see any issue with that. It might be worth just taking it on notice because I know our legal and governance team have inputted into this charter, so whether or not they had any particular issue there. But in theory, of course not councillor, the chair, the chair could be the mayor and/or councillor.
Madam Mayor, may I suggest the order to the charter?
Hold on a minute councillor, you haven't got the nod, councillor Chitty?
Sorry, can I, thanks ma'am, and it's probably going to be the same thing that councillor Rhodes is going to say. Can I move a motion that we endorse the terms of reference, subject to review by legal, that the chair be, obviously I can only say the mayor, can't I? And then you nominate mayor because it's an internal committee? Is that correct?
That's right, yeah, yeah.
So that the chairperson be the mayor or her delegate? And that's subject to obviously doing the review, so just backwards and forwards.
Yeah, sure. No worries.
And then if there's any other changes anyone else needs, I'm happy to take them on board.
Well, through you then, Madam Mayor, to councillor Hachidi, I would have suggested that we make the following changes to the charter for review. And that would be under purpose and objective to state in there that the Companion Animal Advisory Committee is a council community advisory committee and reports to council.
Happy with that one?
In 4.1, under community participation, the committee to consist of five community members and two councillors, one of which shall share the meeting. Full stop, meetings are optional for other councillors to attend.
Happy with that one if it reads the mayor and one other councillor, obviously the mayor's the chair, so just.
Happy with that?
Or her delegate?
The mayor, or her delegate, plus one councillor.
Yeah, happy with that.
You're going to remove councillor, you're going to remove the first line after.
Council staff to lead the first point, chair in the meeting. And replace the last point with advisory committee reporting to council. Under councillor participation, 4.3, attendance for councillors other than those elected on the committee is optional.
There is a technicality, councillors can attend any meeting, but they can't participate if they're not appointed, so it's a redundant, it's a redundant sentence that you're putting in.
Is it? Take your advice on that, I was just trying to pick up the things that were in it. Delete the word staff in the second point under chairperson. And delete the third point.
What is the third point councillor that you're deleting?
Councillor, councillors will not be eligible to be chairperson.
Sorry, what was that?
Councillors will not be eligible to be chairperson.
Well, that's illegal, so I'm sorry, any council committee is actually chaired by the mayor or by his or her delegate, so you can't take that out.
It may be a councillor, Madam Mayor.
It won't be councillor, I don't think you heard me.
No, no, ma'am.
Council committees are chaired automatically by the mayor or a delegate of the mayor.
And that's what we're putting in.
Take councillor out of the chairperson role.
That's the other way around. The charter in its current form says that councillors will not be eligible to be chairperson. Councillor Rhodes is saying a councillor can be, so we're fixing up.
That is, that is correct councillor.
Yeah.
So is that clear? We fixed that up?
Yep.
Please reading right.
Yep, that's fine, thank you. Yep, that's fine. Thank you. Ask Paul what he's into about.
Is that it councillor Rhodes?
Councillor Haggerty, I might call upon you because I haven't got that down. Let me just have a look at this.
Well councillor.
I'll speak to it.
Can we remove that number five? At councils administration building limits where it can be held, just in case.
Yeah, it might have to be virtual.
Yeah, thanks.
Councillor Haggerty, have you found that last point?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's sorted. The four point five.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yep.
It's fixed up. Thank you.
I'm happy to talk in support of this motion.
Need a second up?
Councillor Hadid?
Thank you councillor Hadid. Speakers four councillor Haggerty.
Yep, I'm the one that called for this committee back in February. And my intention was that, I guess, if this committee had been in place two, three, four years ago and it was working well, that we would have arrived at at the correct decision in regards to the animal wealth, the animal shelter quicker, more efficiently and without the amount of vitriol we have copped. So that's the intention of this charter is that, you know, do we get the community's voice? You know, the community are quite well informed on these matters. They, they're quite knowledgeable, they've got great ideas and there's some people that, you know, give up hours and hours of their life as volunteers to help in this space. So if we can get them on board and use their expertise, that's fantastic. It'll improve governance and improve welfare for animals in our city. I, I mentioned back in that February meeting, there are a couple of councils that already have one of these. One of them is Camden and I think, excuse me, from all reports, that's working quite well. And I think with the changes that councillor Rhodes has suggested, that it, that this charter will end up looking remarkably similar to the one we have at Camden. So for that reason, I'm happy to support the motion in its current form. And I look forward to the, the committee getting up and running and helping us do a better job than we already do in the, in the animal welfare space. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Anybody wish to speak against the motion?
No, ma'am, but can the correct mover, sorry, to the middle taker? Yep, thanks.
This is councillor Chitty and councillor Hadid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Can I speak for the motion, madam mayor?
I think nobody is speaking against it. Yes, you can.
Yes, I think that councillor Haggerty is absolutely right. You know, it's incredible that the, the people that we do have in the community and council might be unaware that it's members of the public through social media who assist council by holding stray animals and advertising on neighbourhood media sites where the animals are found. And they do that so quickly that the animals have got a greater chance of finding their rightful owners because it's done so quickly, the animals are missing and they're found straight away. This is done by the public. Another thing that all people may not be aware of is that the members of the public, where it can be identified that certain animals are escaping from backyards on a regular basis, they actually offer to help and go around and fix up the backyards to, to make them work. Hopefully stop the escape artists from getting out. The very first dog that was delivered to Rothmore Vets when we made the transfer over there was checked for microchipping and then delivered by a member of the public who last year was single-handedly responsible for delivering over three hundred similar dogs found in our Liverpool area, Lass or the Fairfield town. And, you know, I don't think council or all of council may not be aware of the many numbers of the people from the public who donate goods all their time, who were previously helping Lass to exercise animals, volunteer to foster animals and where necessary in the rehoming process. You know, the members of the public have really gone above and beyond to help animals in the Liverpool area. From scanning, we've got volunteers out there scanning animals to try and get them home as fast as possible. And I, I think that that is something that we should endorse and try and deliver greater achievements from the, from the members of the public. And so I think this is a move in the right direction. I also want to thank council for bringing this back so promptly. Because councillor Haggerty is correct, we have the opportunity now. These people are out there in the community and we should certainly have them helping us because it will save council money in the long run. So I ask councillors to support the motion with the amendments.
Thank you. Is there any opposition? Given there's no opposition, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared unanimous. The next item is on page eighty one.
I'll move the motion, madam mayor.
What's your motion councillor Ayad?
My motion is what's in the book plus a number seven, please.
Seven, what is your number seven?
Seven is that all outstanding PP's planning proposals in Moorbank be brought before council by October twenty twenty.
Madam mayor, we've got a second up in.
I hope so.
Madam mayor. Thank you councillor Balut. Hold on a moment. We've got a mover and a second up. We've got a point seven now. Councillor Caliander, is it?
Yes, that's right.
Go again.
Just in relation to point seven, is that actually doable? Because my understanding is that it, you know, sometimes it's up to the, the proponent to bring that forward. It's not within council's control.
Okay, well, we can ask the acting CEO for that, an answer to that.
And at the turn, I'll ask Mr Moore.
Through the CEO. It could be difficult to meet that timeframe. I can't tell you exactly the number of planning proposals in Moorbank, but there are several and I might defer to Mr Smith in a moment to, for some more detail on that. But some of them are complex and some are in a situation at the moment where we've asked for additional information and refinements and changes. And we don't control how quickly that can be turned around. So that is, that is one constraint in that respect. At the end of the day, a planning proposal is the council's planning proposal. So they're often initiated by private interests, but ultimately it is, is to be council's planning proposal. But there, there would be significant resources for us to take on, you know, the work that is being, is being put forward by proponents. So other than that, I might take, take it on notice. We can, we can put some back to you by that date, but to put them all back to you by that date could be challenging. I don't know if Mr Smith's there and has anything further to add on that topic.
If I, if I can just interrupt through you, madam mayor. With the permission of councillor Ayad, can we just add that maybe to bring at the next council meeting, what are the outstanding planning proposal that would be coming in the next few months? And based on what Mr Moore said, if we're able to move things forward for the sake of our economy and, and jobs forward, if there's anything that can be done from an operational point of view to be informed regarding the all planning proposal in Moorbank.
Through the CEO, certainly a status update on all is, is, is no issue at all.
Okay, councillors, you've heard the explanations. Councillor Ayad, are you happy with that suggestion from councillor Balut?
I am happy. I think we're definitely due for an update on many proposals in Moorbank. Madam mayor, when I have the opportunity, I'd like to speak for, for the motion, please.
Okay.
So madam mayor, can I just clarify one thing very quickly?
Yes, certainly.
Right, okay, sorry, that's just cleared it up now. I was wondering if the second part of it was still in play, but it's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Question, ma'am, if I can?
Yes councillor Chitty.
Thanks through the, yourself to the relevant officer. Did we not change procedures to ensure that community consultation is undertaken prior to sending to gateway?
I'm last the acting CEO for that information councillor.
Again, Mr Moore.
Through the CEO councillor, that's correct. Yeah, that's concluded now in the community participation plan. But there's a qualifier on it. It's only, I think the wording is major planning proposals. So in this, in this instance, I have the very same question, in fact, of the staff is coming through. This is considered to not meet that criteria and therefore isn't being consulted before we put it to you. Of course, there will be public exhibition in the post gateway phase. But that, that provision is now in the community participation plan.
Okay, in, in relation, if I can, ma'am, please.
Yes, certainly.
And I note now that it's a status update at the next meeting instead of the other wording in relation to the outstanding proposals in Moorbank. What's stopping them from going out, given that they are major? What's stopping them from going out now on public exhibition?
Through the CEO. In, in the case of one of them, it is getting correct information about some of the technical issues with the planning proposal and specifically flooding. So we, we don't want to have significant unanswered questions in respect of flooding when we go to the community. We don't think that's fair actually on the proponent. And, and that's the reason that we've, you know, spelled out in quite a bit of detail what needs to be done, what additional information we're looking for and when we can then move to commu, to public exhibition. I mean, we could, we could do it, we could do it straight away councillor, but I think it presents better to the public if we've got more clarity around important issues like flooding.
I, I think the biggest concern through you, ma'am, is in, and let's face it, in relation to the recyclers and the uncertainty there for the residents. And obviously there's some toing and throwing on, you know, if there is a delay, where is it being caused?
Yeah.
I, I just think why not send them out on exhibition so that we're doing our part if that is possible? At the end of the day, council officers still need to go through reports, still need to gather more information and still need to make recommendations, still needs to go to the planning panel. I mean, it's still a few steps before it comes to council. But just show the community what is being proposed. Get their, I mean, at the end of the day, they could just say no, we're asking for all this information. If they all come back and say this is ridiculous, well then, we've collected all this information, staff have done all this work and it may not go anywhere anyway. So if the mover and second agree, can I suggest a point eight is put in there? That the outstanding proposals be put out on public exhibition for community consultation? At least that gets that bit out of the way.
I'm not sure who the second up is, but councillor, through the chair, if I may, councillor Haggerty, that was actually my intention, my intention when I put the number seven up, that is my intention because I would really like to see these come before council and be voted on because I for one am quite embarrassed now when residents ask me what's happening with concrete recyclers, what's happening with Flower Power Site? It's been in the pipeline for so many years. Other councillors are supporting it. And there's actually no answer for that because councillors are just now currently left in the limbo. We don't know. We haven't had an update and my.
Point of order. Yes, what, hold on, stop, point of order, what's your point of order?
Yeah, last time I checked that there was a, there was an email address or, or a phone, you know, councillors could pick up a phone and ask for an update or request an update via email or any other forums that we wish to attend. I, I don't think it's fair to say that we, we're left in limbo and we, we don't know what's going on. I certainly attend briefings and I think it's David Smith who gives a report at least every quarter on, on planning proposals in Liverpool. So I remember getting an update a month or two ago, so I don't think that's a fair comment.
Okay, point of order taken, but.
Hold on councillor Ayad, I've got a rule on the point of order and I will actually rule in favour of councillor Haggerty because there has been a lot of information about the outstanding proposals. And I've also been present for that information with other councillors, even if it has been virtual of late. So we aren't in the dark as such, so please understand that you do need to be careful of your vocabulary.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you.
But I am now at the point where I'm finding it difficult to respond to residents and it's at the point where it's embarrassing because some of these planning proposals have been in the pipeline for many, many years. And now we've got this before us and it's only a small section of the Flower Power Site. So I'd really like to see the vision for Moorbank move along and I'm quite interested to see what the community wants to happen there. I'm very interested to know what the community consultation will come back as, once it's on public exhibition. And madam mayor, if I may, just back to her cheat his comments. If the policy was changed, that actually means that this motion or this recommendation is actually not in order with the policy. Because if we voted on the new, the new policy, doesn't that mean that the PP's go to council offices? Then they go to community, community consultation, then they go to the panel, then they go to gateway? If they're voted to go to move forward, determined to move forward to gateway? That was my understanding.
Can I just, we'll just get some clarification from the acting CEO councillor.
Thank you, madam mayor. Mr Moore, can you clarify please?
Certainly through the CEO. I think your summary is correct there councillor, but one step that we do undertake before we put it on the first community exhibition for major projects is to do some assessment, to make sure we're satisfied that all the information's there and, you know, that we can proceed forward. And that's, that's the phase that we're in with this particular planning proposal that we're talking about and several others in fact. But there is no issue from my point of view with moving straight on to community consultation with that proposal.
Thank you, Mr Moore.
Just a question there through you, madam mayor.
Yes councillor Balut.
Community consultation, would that advance the, the process? Would it lessen the time for operations slash proponent to move forward with their DAs, projects, et cetera?
I'll ask CEO, acting CEO to make comment.
Thanks, madam mayor. And again, I'll ask Mr Moore just to clarify.
Through the CEO, look councillor, I don't think it would, I mean, it's a, it's a twenty eight day period of time in the process, but it, it's not going through community consultation doesn't in itself resolve some of the issues that we might have with additional information on complex applications. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's a block of time that needs to, needs to be completed in the, in the, in the various steps of, as part of the assessment process. But whether it happens earlier or later in that process, I don't think would influence the amount of time. One of the things that we need to happen in this situation is we need a certain amount of information to come back to us and that's what we've made very clear through meetings and in writing and we're waiting on.
So thank you for that. But so my understanding is you're not holding or council operation not holding any progress. It goes back to the people to comply slash come in for all the answers that council required before it tags further steps, correct?
Yeah, in simple terms, that's correct.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, madam mayor?
Yes councillor Rhodes, before you do though, councillor Haggerty, you have your hand up still. Are you still asking questions?
Well, I was going to speak.
No, I'm just checking and councillor, you've got your hand up still, still wanting to ask questions? Fine, councillor Rhodes, go ahead.
Madam mayor, I'd like to say that I don't have the opportunity to put my hand up on my, my setup here. So I apologise for that, but it's just not something that I can do. So the question that I've got is that when it goes to the planning panel, if they sent it out, put it on public exhibition before it goes to the planning panel, does the planning panel then also know what the public's opinion was of it? Like, you know, if people were in favour of it or not in favour of it? And would that assist the local planning panel or then I have a comment on that?
Councillor, last the acting CEO. Councillor, I'll ask the acting CEO.
And again, I'll ask Mr Mur.
Through the CEO, um, yes, there would be uh a summary of whatever we heard from the public included in the report. That is presented to the local planning panel. But um, just by way of recap, that goes to the panel just for their advice. Before it then comes off to council for a decision. Um, whether or not the, the views of the community would influence the um, the, the views of the panel, I, I really couldn't say councillor. But um, it would, it would be uh, uh, the community, the community input would be summarised in that report. And they would, uh, they would therefore be made aware of it.
So um, just a, a, a further question to the same point. So if there were ten objections or more to the proposal. Would that make it a public meeting?
Uh, through the CEO, uh, no, it wouldn't change anything in terms of the process. Um, the, the ten submissions or more is a, is a trigger that applies. For the referral of development applications to the local planning panel. Um, that same trigger doesn't apply with um referring planning proposals to the panel just for their advice.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you councillor Hagerty.
Um, yeah, I'd like to speak against the motion. Um, I get everyone's frustration that this is taking a long time. Um, you know, I don't want to sort of speak for other councillors, but my, my understanding is that there's broad uh. Endorsement for what's being planned down, down at that area of Moorbank or, you know, the Marina and all that stuff. Um, but uh, I do have problems uh with, I don't have an issue with point seven, I do have an issue with point eight. And the issue is that, you know, someone may put a, a planning proposal forward that, that's consistent with the zoning on that site. That meets the FSR, that, that meets height limits, but may not deal with the site specific constraints around that site. So um, that area in particular obviously got issues around flooding um and contamination. And so if someone puts a, a planning proposal that doesn't deal with either of those. And we just flick it off to Gateway, that, that doesn't help any of us get the outcome we want around that area. It delays it further because it'll just go to Gateway, it'll get knocked back and we'll waste uh everyone's time. Uh, so that's, you know, that, that's not good for the developers, it's not good for us, it's not good for the public. So I think while it's frustrating, I think it's important to spend the time before these things go on exhibition and, and go to Gateway to. To sort out some of those teething issues, um, you know, whether, whether it's flooding or, or something like that. Get, get, get it to a point it's comfortable where it's a feasible project, uh, and then flick it off, off to Gateway. Um, and, and the other thing to note as well is that this is, you know, this is, this, it works both ways. Uh, you know, it's obviously council staff uh need to do their job and need to comply with um uh planning controls and, and all kinds of things. But it's also up to the developers here to, to make sure that they uh, you know, come to the party and, and put forward planning proposals that are. Um, in the public's best interest and, and deal with these things, these constraints that I've mentioned and. Um, make sure that, that, you know, once they've sold off all their apartments or whatever and, and gone off into the sun with bags of money. That the outcome that we're left with as a community is, is a good one. Uh, so it's up to the developers and of course it's up to council staff to, to come up with the best outcome. Um, but just flicking, you know, as soon as we get a planning proposal, flicking it out to, to um for public exhibition. Uh, is not responsible, you need to do a bit of, uh, you know, make sure it's feasible, give it the once over. Uh, make sure the information's there for, for, for the community to make an informed decision. There's no point putting out something for public exhibition. Um, if they're gonna, if, if they're not armed with all the correct information or it's based on a pro- planning, on a planning proposal that's never gonna. Uh, never gonna, you know, never gonna float, it's never gonna get ticked off. That's my say and, and so look, I, in fact, I'm gonna foreshadow a motion.
Okay then. Councillor Ad, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Madam Mayor, please, thank you.
Excuse me, I'm gonna let councillor Ad speak to her motion. Because councillor Hagerty spoke against and it's not reasonable to allow councillor Ad not to have her say.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm happy with the motion as it reads and I'd like to thank my fellow liberal councillors for um having some input. Um, on that note, on the comments that may um councillor Hagerty made. I, I'd just like to remind my fellow councillors that going on public exhibition does not mean an approval. And going to Gateway does not mean an approval. And of course, these planning proposals have to be finished and complete and all the studies. Have to be accepted by council and by Gateway, by the state government and the planning department. As that would be slack on our behalf or the department's behalf. So yes, of course, with all due diligence, but I really would like to see the vision for Moorbank come to life. Um, you know, especially the Marina, people are so excited about that, the community down there is super excited and it's been too long. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor, councillor Chitty, you wish to speak for or against?
I'll speak for Mayor and I'll just pick up on a couple of points for councillor Hagerty. Um, this is not, number eight does not say send it to Gateway, number eight does not say to staff. Don't uh continue with your assessment. It doesn't say do not send it to the local planning panel, it doesn't say do not send it back to council before you send it to Gateway. If the recommendation is to send it to Gateway, at the end of the day, the staff will make an informed decision, make recommendations to the panel. And then to council and then council does what it needs to do. My, my concern is that we brought in the policy um to go to community consultation twice. Once before it goes to Gateway and once after it goes to Gateway. Given that there's a lot of angst in the community in relation to what's happening down in Moorbank. I think it's prudent that we do send it out on community consultation. Saying, and you can put all, in all the disclaimers that there's still more information required and whatnot. This is what the proponent is proposing, have your input on this. At the end of the day, council staff can do all the work with the proponent, get all the reports, tick every single box. Could then go out to community consultation and we have a hundred objections. And then we're back to pretty much nearly square one in relation to the issues that they've raised. Let's go out to community consultation, yes, let's get their input with all the disclaimers. And then it still needs to go through the process, staff still need to do their work, still needs to go to the panels, still needs to go to council. And then we see where it ends up there, but I'm supportive of the motion as it is.
Thank you councillor, I have a hand up, but I unfortunately can't see who it is.
That's me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Blue, go ahead.
Part of the motion.
You're speaking support?
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I, Madam Mayor, I, I mean, yes, I'll pick up on councillor Hagerty. I mean, what are the losses done when we do all agree? That it's gotta go through the system and tick all the boxes. All what we're asking is an update for us and the community to have a better understanding. Of what is coming and what is exciting and what is gonna create jobs. And we're all looking forward to it. The outstanding planning proposal, I mean, again, I've asked that question previously. Where is the hurdle by again, putting it on public exhibition and get the community to play a role and be part of it? Again, it's gonna go through all the procedures and tick all the boxes. Now, it's reasonable to inform our community more and more and more and we'll keep doing that, including ourselves. So indeed I support it, indeed there's no hurdles, indeed we're not jumping uh any hurdles that should not be done. All we're doing is trying to understand and get the community to understand by going on public exhibition. And that this is it, have your say, then it'll come back. And, and the departments can do whatever they like with it. And if an individual or proponent's gonna hold information and not provide it to council, that's fine. As long as they do that, tick all the boxes, off we go, so very supportive of it, as it is progressing.
Thank you councillor, I still have another hand up that I can't see who it is, um, unfortunately on my system.
It's me councillor Hall.
Thank you, councillor Hall, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, I meant to ask questions earlier and um.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You didn't see my hand, sorry about that. Uh, the question was, um, and despite all that's been said. Uh, those blocks, those, currently those blocks of land are three hundred square metres. Is uh, to planning I imagine, Mr Timmore. Is, is there a possibility that that can be changed? In other words, that area currently is zoned R three. One of the problems with COVID nineteen, that is, there's more people going to be at home. We probably need more, our blocks of land to be bigger than what they were before. And in an R three zone, a three hundred square metre block of land is on the small side. If the community suggests that that should be higher, is that possible?
Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but I think that may relate to the next item.
Uh, den- density map?
Sorry, no, sorry.
Okay, well just let, um, I'll ask the acting CEO to answer the question.
I get Mr Mur.
Yeah, through the, through the CEO, um, three hundred square metres is the minimum allotment size proposed councillor. Um, uh, that, that's correct. Um, I might have to defer to Mr Smith whether it would fit in the um sequencing of things for. For a larger lot size to be uh, to be imposed there, so Mr Smith, can you talk to that detail for me?
Yes, certainly through the acting CEO, in relation to this planning proposal, um, the. Minimum lot size is not proposed to, to be changed. Ultimately, how council sees the minimum lot sizes in either the R two zone or the R three zone that have a three hundred. Uh, square metre lot size would be subject to additional research that council would have to do. So if the council is um looking at that as an option, it may. Issues and options paper comes back to council i- in the next few months. To identify the feasibility of that consistency with the district and regional plan, the LSPS and ministerial directions. But yep, at the end of the day, that's a matter for council.
Thank you councillor Caliander.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, in terms of the motion as it stands, uh, am I able to speak against it?
Yes, yes you can councillor, go right ahead.
Um, look, I, I understand people's sort of um desire for, for, for the community engagement and I'd be the last person to argue. Um, against that, but I think it's also, uh, it's, it's dangerous to put information that may not be correct. That may still need work out there because it, it spooks people, it causes them unnecessary anxiety and, and distress. Um, and we've seen numerous examples of that where, you know, something's been put out to the community. It, it may not have been, um, you know, the correct information or whatnot and people in the community have gotten distressed as a result. So I don't understand why we kind of, um, why we're doubling down on that and why we're encouraging that. So I would be very uncomfortable about supporting this motion as it stands. Because I just see that it um could actually have unintended consequences when, um, you know, when put into practice.
Thank you councillor Caliander, councillor Ad, would you like the right of reply?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, in light of um councillor Caliander's points. I just wanna also remind my fellow councillors that there's no reason why it can't go on public exhibition again. But now for the initial stages, these planning proposals have been in the pipeline for a little while. Let's get them out there, let's get the community involved, let's get the community's views on these planning proposals and then take it from there. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, the debate has been closed, um, I think we're going to, this is one where we have to have our names recorded. So um George, I'll need that list and I'll just go through. Any minute now, thank you, councillor Ad, I gather you're voting for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Balut, I'm gathering you're voting for it too, you second it, uh councillor Chitty? Voting for? Councillor Deet?
For.
Councillor Hagerty?
Against.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Caliander?
Against.
Councillor Khanib?
Against.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes? Councillor Rhodes? Councillor Shilton? Thank you, you're for, councillor Shilton?
Against, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, um, I'll vote for, thank you. Declare the meeting, uh, meeting, declare the motion carried, the next item is on page eighty-nine. Madam Mayor, you're in the second up?
Madam Mayor, is that um Egra O four?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll move that, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ad, we got a second up?
Happy to move it, Madam Mayor, councillor.
Councillor Hall? Okay, any discussion? Is there any opposition? Well, I'll put it as unanimous, if anybody disagreed, now's the time to speak up. Okay, for the tightest, everybody agreed, the next item is on page ninety-four.
Um, just have a, through you Madam, I have a question there.
Certainly.
Just our tree policy, we're talking about clean air. I know we do have a tree policy, can someone just let me know a little bit more?
I have a motion, I have a motion.
Oh, there you go.
Okay councillor Hall, what is your motion?
I have a motion, one, uh, this is that council, one acknowledges council for the report. Two, further acknowledges that council commitment to improve air quality in Liverpool. Council commitment to improve air quality in Liverpool and will provide a further report back to council in the August slash September. Meeting that includes A, there's one, two, three, four, five points. A close arrangements with the EPA necessary to address. Where are we? A, oh. Oh, you've got it, look at that, you've got it, I didn't see that.
Increasing tree.
Just check there, increasing tree counter piece. C, addressing hotspot mitigation. And D, possible further conditions placed on identified development applications to mitigate non. To mitigate possible non-compliance and pollution, yes. And C was a long-term plan to measure and monitor air pollution in various specific, yes, that's the correct one.
Good, I'm pleased, okay, so you're moving that, we got a second up?
Oh, I did, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor, do you wish to speak to your motion councillor Hall?
Uh, yes, I can just make a few comments, this has been an, a uh. A subject that has obviously been debated in council for many years. And uh, it's an issue particularly with some of our uh. Waste recycling facilities that have caused us some concerns. And hopefully this addresses or will eventually address some of these issues. Unfortunately, the EPA is the uh body that's responsible for monitoring. That these uh recycling places in particular comply. Sadly, that doesn't always occur and so we suffer poor air quality at times. And um even council, council uh usually can't do very much about it because it's a, it's an EPA. Uh, licensing condition and hence we have issues. Hopefully this will address some of those issues in the future and if we do get more problems, I hope to speak on the matter at the time. So uh, this is a, a sort of a compromise, it's not exactly what I want, but hopefully this will go some way towards alleviating. Air quality problems in Liverpool, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hall, councillor Balut, you were going to ask some questions, did we interrupt?
And a mayor through you, uh, just a little bit of understanding of our tree policy, I mean. Um, obviously councillor Hall has um addressed some of the issues there, um, which is great, uh, I'll be supporting that on that note. Just a little bit about the tree policy. Uh, what does council have, what plans they've, they have to um, uh, increase. Uh, 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 tree plantation in, in Liverpool and around Liverpool?
Councillor Balut, I, I have to say, we've had a fairly um in-depth briefing on that, but I will get the acting CEO to.
Yeah, I wanted to get an update, Madam Mayor, I'm aware of some of the briefings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll ask Mr Mur to speak to that.
Um, I can speak to the effort in the CBD, but I might have to refer that. Um, to perhaps Raj or Peter that look at trees beyond the CBD, but councillor in the CBD, there's um the adoption of the public domain master plan. Recently, which goes through quite a bit of detail on. recently, which goes through quite a bit of detail on those streets that will, um, will result in new tree planting, all of the species and so on. So it becomes a new master plan for the, for tree, uh, street tree planting in the CBD and the, and the area just immediately surrounding the CBD. But, um, acting CEO might have to refer that question to, perhaps it's Raj for, um, the tree policy beyond the, the CBD.
Madam Mayor, can I, um, just make a comment that might clarify things for people?
Yes, certainly councillor.
Reading the motion is that acknowledges council commitment to improve air quality in Liverpool and will provide a further report back to council that will address those issues. So you've already got a report coming back, uh, to council from, uh, the department, which is going to be giving you more details about increasing tree canopies. So I just wanted to point that out to people, um, and to councillor Balut, that there is a report coming back in August and September that will include, uh, matters concerning increasing tree canopies.
Thank you, thank you for that updated information.
I would also ask the acting CEO that if there's any existing policies, which I, I know there are, that they be furnished to councillor Balut as soon as possible. Um, thank you. Uh, anybody wish to speak for the motion?
Um, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Um, if the mover and the second are happy, I'd, I'd love to add something to this. Um, I'd like to commend, um, councillor Hagerty on this motion, it's a great motion. Namely, I love point B where he said increase, um, increasing tree canopies. Um, so look, Madam Mayor, in the past, I myself have moved motions which have, um, been determined by council, so has my colleague councillor Hachidi. These motions unfortunately haven't been fulfilled to date. So they do actually relate closely to increasing tree canopies. Um, my motion referred to plantings on Courage on Road. Um, so I'd like to see tree canopies there, I'd like to see maybe plane trees planted along there. And also I recall councillor Hachidi, um, councillor Hachidi's motion was, um, in reference to roundabouts, all roundabouts to be green and colourful. Now, the reason I, um, bring this up is because in light of the air quality in Liverpool, the only way we're gonna improve it is by planting more trees and having more greenery. Um, so I'd really, really like to see these motions carried through as soon as possible.
Thank you, councillor, does anybody wish to speak against the motion?
Madam Mayor, I also had one more point today.
Oh, sorry, councillor.
Sorry, pardon me. Also, I am aware that there was roughly about a hundred thousand dollars, um, in a V P A by Gas Corp when Orange Grove went through. Um, and I'd like to see, basically, I wanna know where that hundred thousand dollars has gone and if it hasn't been used, I would like council, councillors to have the opportunity to kind of decide where that goes. Does that work, Madam Mayor?
Well, councillor, I don't know whether that, that, that's an operational matter. As such, when you get down to that sort of nitty-gritty, that's becoming operational, you're making policy decisions and you're just generally saying this is what you want and the council staff will come back to you with the plan. You've made it known what sort of things you're expecting, so I think we now leave it in the hands of the council staff and they will report back. And if the mover and the second are happy with the extra point, um, we can proceed from there, so.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that clarity. Um, and also could we please include, I mean, if councillor Hachidi is happy, can we include his, um, roundabouts being green and colourful? So his motion was every roundabout in Liverpool basically to be green and colourful.
It's like Gas Corp.
Not every roundabout can be because some of them unfortunately are brick.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, the ones that you can plan on, sorry.
I think, could I also though say councillor, you've got to be aware of what goes on roundabouts because they have to be, you have to be able to see through the roundabout because it's a safety issue, so I'm just putting that out there, sorry to sound like a sad sack.
No, that's fine.
If it becomes a total jungle, you've got a safety issue.
I, I completely agree with that, so maybe the low hedging, the low gardening, I mean, something within, in, within the safety parameters.
Beautified, I understand.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Hearts and councillor Rhodes, are you happy with that added item?
Can I speak for the motion, Madam Mayor?
Well, first of all, I've gotta get permission from you two to add the three on, is that okay?
With me?
Could I make?
Okay. Okay, yes, now you may speak councillor Hall, uh, councillor Rhodes?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, councillor Hall?
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, point three, with councillor, where councillor Ayad suggested plane trees, uh, I understand that they are a problem in some areas and maybe that needs to be suitable shade trees.
Hmm. Yeah, I would actually be putting, well, she had, uh, councillor Ayad hasn't actually said, she said ideally, she didn't say they had to be, so I think with the word ideally saved that sentence.
Yes.
Because again, you're right, there has to be reasons, you have to be careful again what you're planting for all sorts of reasons. They might look great in your backyard or front yard, but sometimes in public places that can be a problem. But yes, okay, thank you. Um, so councillor Rhodes, you like to speak, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, um, uh, I, I'm really grateful that, uh, there's been other contributions to this particular motion because the idea of this particular motion was the fact that, um, we know that there has been other motions put up around, um, tree canopies and, uh, and landscaping issues around roundabouts and stuff like that, as well as other, uh, things in, about hotspot mitigation and everything like that. The idea of this particular motion, which was done in discussion with Raj, was to put a motion together and it's all going to be addressed in a report back, uh, from that department so that, um, you've got it all contained in a motion so that we're not dealing with separate parts of it. So that was the idea of the motion from my understanding with the discussion of, uh, about it with Raj. So I, um, I thank, um, councillor Ayad for adding in the things that she has previously put into council because that was the idea. And, uh, yeah, I think that, uh, this will, if we can do this, this will save council staff time, uh, and not have to answer single motions put in, in and around the same sort of issues. So, um, so I thank councillor Ayad for her contribution.
Thank you, councillor, I'll just have a question of the acting CEO. Um, the timeframe, August, September, is that realistic given it does have a wide scope of topics?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll ask Mr Atara, as I assume he's gonna lead this report.
Uh, through, through the CEO, uh, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for pointing that out. I do, uh, agree, I mean, the deadline for the August council, uh, meeting report is almost, uh, imminent and, and, and September is not too far either, so, uh, I would really, uh, appreciate if, uh, further, uh, or more time is provided to be able to put a meaningful report to council, thank you.
Now, what sort of time would you suggest then?
As the chair, what time would, would you say is correct for you councillor? I'm sorry, Raj?
Oh, in, in the, in the conversation, in the meeting that I've had with councillors, uh, Hall and Rhodes, uh, I did suggest that a report, uh, back in, in six months' time. Just to give councillors a bit of context, uh, this report is providing an update to earlier decisions of council where we have committed to a range of actions, uh, to be, to be taken to, to improve the overtime, uh, to, to improve the quality of air within Liverpool and, and that includes, uh, tree planting to, to increase the canopy to deal with the heat island impact as an example, as well as changes to the D C P, uh, as well as having our own air monitoring regime to, uh, to have better data, uh, to able to have meaningful conversation with the EPA. Uh, so my suggestion was that, uh, we bring a report back every six months to keep councillors updated on the work that council is undertaking in a range of the, the multitude of actions, uh, that are being undertaken and it'll take a, a bit of time to compile that report. So six months is what I had suggested and, 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 and that would be a more reasonable timeframe, thank you.
Councillors, you've heard, uh, the staff member involved, um, uh, are you willing to change your timeline to give them more time to do this?
Happy to do that, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
And our apologies for, uh, getting that wrong from the meeting, so.
So that'd be December, I would suggest you put December council meeting there and then you could follow up with a meeting six months later in June and so on and so on, so that would work really well. Okay, is there any opposition to this motion?
No, I've just got a question.
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm clearly not as knowledgeable on matters horticultural as, as some of my fellow councillors, but, uh, do we mean plane trees as in flying, things flying or plain as in ordinary? I just wanna get the wording right, there might be a specific.
Madam Mayor, if I may, councillor Hagerty, it's actually, um, a breed of tree, if that's the correct terminology.
Yeah, that was my next question, is it a type of tree or do we mean?
Yes, it's a type of tree.
Ah, well, there you go. I, I am not as knowledgeable on horticultural matters.
There is some, there are already some in Liverpool throughout our CBD and, um, they're all over Melbourne CBD, they look quite lovely in Melbourne, if you've ever been there, I'm sure you've noticed the.
Trying not to at the moment, councillor.
Yes, aren't we all?
The spelling is correct.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna Google plane trees, thank you, everyone.
All right, any opposition? I'm gonna put it, those in favour, those against, I'm gonna declare it unanimous. Okay, the next item's on page ninety-four.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move a motion to this, um, so in light of, um, the situation with COVID changing daily government grants being introduced and whatnot, um, I'm seeing that council has already given out some grants and the fact that the state government has just announced another stimulus for businesses, um, I'd like to see this come back to us in the next council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the reason for this is I'm thinking, let this come before us, if COVID does worsen o- over the period, interim period between now and next council meeting, we could always have an extraordinary meeting, um, let's just play it by ear and see how the situation goes.
So, um, let's receive a further report at the next council meeting, no?
Please, yes.
Mayor, I'll second that if councillor Ayad is that.
So moved by councillor Ayad and seconded by councillor Chitty?
Nah, uh, mayor, sorry.
No, sorry?
Yeah, yeah, I am, if it's not the next council meeting, we just heard from Raj that, you know, the next council meeting's almost closed first half.
That's right.
So maybe, maybe leave it till September.
Thank you, yeah, okay, I'll be happy with that.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, um, I mean, the sentiment of this is just to kind of see how the situation goes. I, I do hold firmly to support business, but we also need to think about council. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, is there any opposition to this?
Uh, if I, if I may just have a, a word through you, Madam Mayor?
Yes, councillor Balut?
Yes, look, I agree with that sentiment, uh, that, uh, just councillor Ayad outlined, especially with the latest, the New South Wales, uh, uh, three thousand business recovery grant. State government have been doing outstanding work slash federal government for Australia as a whole. Now, yes, it makes a lot of sense to, uh, defer, receive and defer that because who knows? If the way we're going at the moment, there could be another grant that is, uh, considered by either state or federal.
Excuse me, councillor Balut, somebody has to mute their, mute their sound, please?
Yeah, yes, yes, Madam Mayor, you're right.
Someone needs to. I don't know where that's coming from. All right, keep going councillor Balut, sorry.
Yeah, so, so, so I do agree with the sentiment, I'll, I'll repeat myself again. Uh, thank you to the state government that have latest, uh, three thousand dollar grant, which is recovery grant, that was great, that was, uh, nothing wasn't expected, it just was dropped in i- in, in, in a great positive way. So yes, I think we should hold back a bit as much as, uh, anyone, everyone know how much I go out of my way to support small business, but we don't know yet whether there will be another stimulus package with what's happening in Victoria, very sadly to hear that. Uh, so there could be some assistance on the way, uh, for small business, I'd love to see that happen by state or federal, uh, and there could be something. So yes, it makes a lot of sense, delay it, uh, for next month to see where that's gonna take us. And if we do, if council comes into the party and assists, and I'm supportive of that within our means of course, at least we will go in, uh, with an understanding of what's happening with state and federal, if anything would happen. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Balut. Is there any?
Madam Mayor? I have a question.
What is your question, councillor?
One of the things that, um, is disturbing me at this, this moment is the, uh, the news reports on what happens in, uh, nursing homes and, uh, things like that. And I was just wondering whether it would be in, I don't know, in the future possible for, um, you know, this department who do, does such a great job to, uh, look at, uh, the nursing homes and aged care facilities as to whether our facilities that we have in Liverpool have adequate, um, uh, P P equipment and, um, and if they haven't, if it's possible for us to do something to assist them in that matter, um, I'd hate for us in, in Liverpool to have such facilities, um, who are not prepared with, um, the P P equipment. Now, I don't even know whether this is appropriate for this particular department, but, um, perhaps if I could put it in as, uh, even if I just take it on notice and get back to me to see whether it is a possibility or.
Can I suggest you take it, the council takes it on notice councillor, because this is really a health issue, we're not the Department of Health and also a lot of the nursing, or all the nursing homes, as far as I'm aware, are private. And, uh, I know they're small businesses, but they are in a different situation to our other business folk. And I would suggest that liaising with health over those matters would be more appropriate. So how about we get the council staff to report back to you and take it on notice?
That, that would be fine, if council can, um, uh, report back to me and, uh, we take it from there, I'll try and get some work on that.
No worries, we can do that. Is there any opposition to this motion?
Just a point, um, Madam Mayor, um, to close off the last thing, uh, aged care is a federal government responsibility, but that wasn't why I put my hand up. Um, uh, I, I, I'm happy to support this on the, but with a, with a, uh, an additional point that we note, um, councillor Ayad's comments that, uh, if, if we need to, we can hold, um, you know, extraordinary, an extraordinary meeting to bring forward grants if, if the situation, um, if, if the situation requires, so that perhaps that we put that in writing. Yeah, because that, that way, I guess, uh, you know, it, it, it sends a message to our business community that, that although we have deferred the grants, we are keeping an eye on things and, and we will, you know, I guess, move heaven and earth if we need to, if the situation changes. So, um, yeah, councillor Ayad.
A point two, that says if the situation deteriorates, that the matter be brought back as an extraordinary meeting.
Yep.
Are you happy with that, councillor Ayad?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. That's okay, all right.
Otherwise, happy to speak.
Councillor Balut? Councillor Balut, shush, 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 it's off your turn. Councillor, have you finished?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to speak, uh, for the, for the motion, um, uh, I think it's good that, uh, you know, my fellow councillors, uh, now recognise the need, uh, for, for grants in this space, um, I think some of the previous.
Point of order, mayor. Excuse me, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, uh, I'd like to pull over.
Hold on councillor Balut, there's a point of order, when a point of order's called, everybody has to shush.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
I'll, I'll withdraw.
Thank you.
It was sloppy, sloppy wording, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Take your apology, continue.
Um, yeah, no, I, I just note that there were comments made previously that, that things are not as bad as they seem to be and, and that council overreacted to the problem. Um, as we can see, we're now going through what looks like a second wave, uh, so we still need to keep our, uh, eyes, uh, on this situation, um, and, and make sure that our, our businesses are being supported where they can be, so happy to support the motion.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Balut, you're not next, I had to tell you, councillor Caliander, you had your hand up.
Oh, sorry, Madam Mayor, I think that was accidental or leftover.
Okay, now councillor Balut, go first.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that, Madam Mayor, yes, look, I, I appreciate apology from councillor Hagerty, that's fair. Uh, look, I, I do, Madam Mayor, support that very, very much and, and I do support, uh, point two, uh, what, uh, councillor Hagerty, uh, has outlined. Um, Madam Mayor, I'd like to add point three, if that's possible. Um, madam mayor, I'd like to add point three, if that's possible, uh, because based on what councillor Hagerty is, to write to the state government, New South Wales state government, to thank him and, and, and really appreciate all the effort and the support that they have provided to local governments slash small business in New South Wales. And of course, the latest is the three thousand dollar grant. That goes a long way. We know that, we understand that. Uh, and again, a comment in there that my heart goes out to Victorians and what is happening at the moment.
Well, while we're at it, um, I know that, um, I think the C, the acting CEO, uh, commented recently that, um, the, I think it was the chief medical officer was very, um, complimentary of the effort Liverpool has made, um, in regards to crossroads, uh, well, not crossroads, I correct myself, the, the recent cluster in our area. Um, and, uh, you know, there's some comparisons, I guess, the reason we haven't, one of the reasons we haven't ended up in the situation we have, uh, in Melbourne is that we have, um, some very strong trusted, uh, institutions in our area that work well together. So, you know, obviously the, the local he- health area, um, the, the police, council of course, and, um, I know that, uh, some of the community groups. Um, and, and I'll, you know, obviously I have an association with the migrant resource centre, but I know groups up the migrant resource centre and some of the other groups like that have, have worked well to get the message out, work with community groups and make sure that, um, we're all doing the right thing, we're getting tested. Um, you know, we're all sort of cooperating, we, we're socially distancing. So, um, I think Liverpool's pulled together quite well. You know, it's obviously still a, a dicey situation, but we've come through it a lot better than Melbourne because we have, uh, very strong trusted institutions in our area that work well together, so they should all be commended.
Thank you councillor Blue.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. And I'll add to councillor Hagerty, if you don't mind, madam mayor, is to thank our council staff and the cooperation they have provided to work with everybody, uh, to absolutely come out of it, I think, in a much better way, what happened in Crossroads. So thank you to all the staff.
A lot of work is done behind the scenes. Thank you very much councillors.
So, madam mayor, can I follow up on that particular point? Because I believe that council received accolades for the work that was done, uh, by this, uh, particular department. And looking at it, the workload is just absolutely amazing. And the different initiatives that were introduced. So I wonder if we could add a point for that the mayor write, uh, you know, do the same thing. Write to the, uh, council and, uh, show there so that the staff know that they were appreciated for this huge effort that they put in this. And, uh, acknowledge that council did receive accolades for it, uh, on, on, on the backbone of what, of the work that they did.
Yes, certainly councillor. I mean, I have to say, finding Ash Road and also working with health and doing all sorts of other things has been a fairly interesting time for the staff and it was well done. Okay, is there any opposition? Well, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous. We will now have a fifteen minute break. It isn't covered under the seven eleven plans, so the funding stream for that will be have to be very different to the, um, other areas that are going to be built in that space. But I think it would be wise for all the councillors to be given the plans for all the section eleven plans and the funding dedicated to those plans. So people can see the sort of assets are going to be developed in the newer areas and the existing areas.
So can that be provided? I'd appreciate that.
Yes, that's, that's available councillor, that can be done. Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition?
Can I speak to it quickly?
Yes, certainly, you can speak to it councillor.
Thank you. Firstly, again, thank you staff, I see a big smile on Tina's face, um, for bringing this to us. I know there's been some backwards and, and thrown. I'm hoping all councillors support this because a few items ago, they were worried to put things on exhibition and raising standards for community and not being able to deliver it. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that all councillors, um, support this, but I'm a little bit worried from a previous motion. In relation to the lobbying brochure, um, I've left it very simple, but I hope that, and I'm sure staff will, send that out to who they can, when they can, um, once it's designed. We did some really nice brochures and media in relation to the transit way along Fifteenth Avenue, Hoxton Park Road. Grabbed a lot of media retention and actually brought it to light with a lot of agencies as well, and I think people have come bo- on board because of the work that was done by the marketing team, which they got to be congratulated for. Um, there are some big numbers in here, we know that, but there are also big numbers when we look at projects that are happening around Parramatta. Uh, people said they were dreaming, they ended up with a stadium and a brand new aqu- aquatic centre. Um, lots of things happening out there and I think if we are on the front foot, we shouldn't be scared by the figure. We've got to do our damn best to get out there and try to get as much funding as we can for this project. Um, and let's use the agencies, let's use the federal government, let's use the state government and then work out what other sources we need. But I think this would be a great project for the area and I seriously do look forward to getting an invitation one day, because I won't be around, to the opening of this place. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you councillor. Is there any other discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare carried unanimously. Next item's on page one three five.
Happy to receive.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Sheldon, seconded councillor Rhodes.
Madam mayor, I do have a question related.
Certainly, yep, what's your question?
The motion was moved previously at council to hold another briefing meeting with West Rock about PPA investment opportunity into green energy. Um, just a simple question, when is that briefing scheduled to take place?
I'll ask the acting CEO.
Uh, Mr Nadan, can you confirm for us please?
For the CEO, I have to take it on notice on this one here, um, actually it's not driven by, by my area. We, I have to talk to the respective areas and find out, um, um, when it's going to happen.
I'd appreciate that and, uh, can accept it being taken on notice. It's just that, uh, looking at the investments and, uh, and the, uh, the particular proposal put forward was in, I don't know, be now, and that's why we need briefing, but it was an opportunity to invest in something that was going to give us a better return than some of our investments, so.
Thank you councillor, you was taken on notice and, um, that information will be provided.
Question there, please.
Yes, certainly.
Thanks. Through to the, I take it through yourself to the CFO, through the, sorry, uh, acting CEO. Page one forty, the independent veri- uh, sorry, verification by head of audit, risk and improvement. Is, is there a need for that ongoing?
Mr Humphreys, through, through, through the CEO, um, the audit and risk committee, when, when the request was first made, um, um, did indicate that, uh, in, 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 in light of, uh, audit of New South Wales doing a comprehensive third party confirmation, this was, um, in a little bit over the top and we are actually making the, uh, a, a proposal to, um, the audit and risk committee to relook at it. And, and their recommendations and we will come back to the council.
Is there, do, do they think it's worthy, uh, worthwhile, the audit and risk committee, from what you're understanding?
Um, probably not.
Okay, if the mover and seconder are happy, I'm happy to, given that I asked for this, uh, happy for that to be removed if the mover and seconder are happy?
I have no difficulty with that, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page one four three.
Happy to move as per the recommendation.
Thank you, seconded.
Happy to second, madam mayor.
Any opposition?
Uh, ju- just a few words there, madam mayor, if you don't mind through you.
Yes, certainly councillor.
Yes, I, I do support what the decision was made there, that, um, no increase, um, uh, for, uh, councillors, et cetera. That's the least we can do is, uh, uh, being part and contribute with the hardship that everyone's facing at the moment. So yes, fully agree with that.
Thank you. Um, given there's no opposition, I'm going to go declare it carried. Next item's on page one six seven.
Mayor, I'm leaving for this one.
Okay, I don't know how you're going to remember to come back, but good luck with that one. We might get George to text you, Barbie.
I have a question on this one, madam mayor.
Yes councillor.
Um, I really, I, I, you know, this is fantastic that, uh, we can update our flood maps using the system. The question that I've got is how does the new method of flood measurements account for the velocity and flow in respect of possible vegetation and rubbish that might be in the, uh, the flow bed of the creeks and rivers? And I would presume that that would impact on the spread of the flood and, uh, the amount of properties impacted. Can I ask how the velocity is taken into consideration by this new method of, um, of, uh, flood measuring?
I will ask the CEO, acting CEO to respond.
Thank you, madam mayor. And in turn, I will ask Mr Otar.
Uh, uh, through, through the CEO, thank you for that question councillor Rhodes. Uh, so question about the, the velocity, uh, I guess that is dependent on the topography of the site. So as, as, as the report suggests, uh, that we've got up to date and, and, and very accurate, uh, topographical information. Uh, and, and the velocity is determined by a range of factors, topography and the grade being one. The other thing, the other point you, you raise about the vegetation, that's a very good question actually. And, and as part of the flood modelling, we make an assessment of the, the level of vegetation or the extent of vegetation within the creek corridor. Because you're absolutely right in saying it does have some impact on the velocity and the flow spread. Uh, so the, the modelling, uh, uh, allows for a blockage factor. So it uses a percentage, uh, twenty percent, fifteen percent, uh, blockers to allow for the vegetation. But can I just, just clarify that the, the existence of vegetation or the blockage is only relevant, I guess, to the extent we're talking about the more frequent, uh, range and the, and the smaller flood event in, 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 in periods and in circumstances where we're talking about the kind of event we experience in South Creek, like one percent flood event, the vegetation becomes irrelevant because of the extent of flow, uh, the velocity of flow and the, uh, and, and, and the, and the depth of flow. So, uh, vegetation, uh, is sort of not relevant when we're talking about the kind of flooding that is actually used for, 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 uh, for the purposes of this, uh, one percent flooding. Uh, hopefully that, that answers the question.
Hmm, thank you and I'm happy to move the motion.
Happy to second it, madam mayor.
Thank you. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried unanimously. The next item's on page one seven five.
Now, there is a motion that, uh, we'd like to put up for, uh, this particular item, conservation of koala habitats. I think, uh, I think that, uh, you have got it, George. There it is. Um, this motion is a combined effort between myself and councillor Caliander, so I'd like it moved by myself and councillor Caliander.
Well, it's up to councillor Caliander to actually make that decision, but councillor Caliander, are you seconding it?
Sorry, madam mayor, can you just scroll down a little bit? Yep. Yep, happy to second.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a mover and a seconder? And, uh, would you wish to talk to your motion?
Yeah, I will. It's pretty self-explanatory, but once again, this particular motion was, uh, following a conversation, um, with, uh, the council department. And, uh, the first thing we would like to thank them for is for the, uh, the reports that they provided, because they certainly put in a great deal of effort on to those reports. And in the reports, they pointed out the limitations of the virtual fencing in urban areas, it just doesn't work. So I thank them for finding that out and including that in their report. Um, uh, the, 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 once again, this is a motion which is trying to put together the things that different councillors have, uh, put in at different times. So it's one motion to bring us all back on to the same page and, uh, save, uh, the, the department perhaps time and effort and energy. Uh, because they are proposing a report and a business case for a koala hospital and sanctuary in the, uh, Liverpool LGA. And, uh, that will be coming back to us. Um, and the council has already, uh, moved motions to support the Georges, a national park along the Georges River and the opportunity to plant koala feeder trees there. Um, they have achieved things, the recent delivery of koala crossings have recognised Liverpool kill spot, hotspots. And, uh, uh, one, one, a big one that I really want to thank, uh, council for is the inclusion of wildlife crossings incorporated into the upgrade of Heathcote Road. Um, that's, that's been mentioned many times by a number of council, councillors. And, uh, the fact that they are still having ongoing discussions with the Department of Defence, Koala Preservation on army land in the Liverpool LGA, that's been mentioned by a number of times, by a number of, uh, different constituents as well as councillors. And, um, their ongoing support and cooperation with Sutherland and Campbellland councils in the interest of koala preservation. Um, and I will leave councillor Caliander to talk about the findings from the New South Wales Parliamentary, um, inquiry. But, uh, basically it's just putting, uh, where we're up to on one page so that everybody knows what we have achieved and what we hope to achieve in the future. And, uh, so that, uh, everybody is where, you know, that, that these things have already been put into council and this is, uh, where we're up to. So. Um, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers against the motion? Councillor Caliander being the seconded, you wish to speak to the motion?
Uh, look, I'll keep it brief, madam mayor. Um, the background to the findings of the report and why the report was commissioned in the first place um, are contained in my notice of motion later on. Um, so if this motion is passed, um, I believe I'll, I'll just withdraw my notice of motion later on.
Thank you councillor. Given there's no opposition, there isn't a right reply, I'm going to put the motion, those in favour. Those against, please raise your voices if you're against. Given there's no, nobody against, I'll declare it carried. The next item on the agenda is, she says, um.
Can we move them as a whole, madam mayor?
Yes, certainly councillor did. We got a second? Thank you councillor Hall. I'll put the, all the committees as a whole, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is questions with notice, starting with page two two six, in the name of councillor Hagerty.
Sorry, madam mayor, I've got a mouthful of snacks, um.
That's all right.
Um, yeah, uh, uh, I, I, I hope this one makes sense. Um, but, but basically the scenario I'm asking for here is someone puts in a, a DA, uh, it's refused. They take it to the Land and Environment Court, Land and Environment Court then decides to appro- effectively approve the DA against, uh, um, ca- rule against councils' ruling. Um, and then my question is what appeal rights do we have, what options do we have? Um, and, uh, uh, the one I'm talking about in particular is actually in the, um, legal affairs report later. So maybe we can have a bit of a more, um, open discussion about that when we come to that item. So, yeah, happy to wait for an answer back.
All right, thank you very much. Councillor Caliander, your question's coming back in August, are you happy to proceed with that?
Uh, yes, madam mayor, happy to wait for the responses to come back.
Wonderful, thank you. The next item's also in your name councillor Caliander and it's on page two two eight.
Uh, madam mayor, this is the notice of motion that it was dealt with in a previous item, so I'm happy to withdraw that.
Fine, thank you. Next item's on p- page two three oh.
Was it in my name?
No, it's councillor Hagerty. Oh no, sorry, I apologise, it is in your name, I'll skip the page.
Excellent.
It is. Women's football.
Yes, um, so as there was, uh, quite a lot of coverage, um, about recently, Australia and New Zealand, um, were successful in their joint bid to host the twenty tw- twenty-three FIFA World Cup. Um, I think initial, uh, estimates showed that there were about one point one two billion people who tuned into the coverage of the twenty nineteen World Cup, um, and that's only sort of forecasted to grow for the, the next World Cup that's coming on. So given that we are investing quite a lot into football facilities locally and that, um, Sil- Cirillo Reserve at, at at Middleton Grange is already sort of earmarked to be. and that, um, Cirillo Reserve at, at Middleton Grange is already sort of earmarked to be, um, a specialist women's football facility. Um, I think it's sort of aligned quite strategically to, um, to go out and lobby for, um, whether it's, um, you know, some, some one of the teams to be located there for training purposes, um, for Liverpool to perhaps host an international team. Um, you know, in terms of, uh, accommodation and hospitality and all of those sorts of things. Um, I think it would be really great addition to our destination management plan. Um, and to kind of sell Liverpool to a, an international audience.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder?
Yeah, I'm happy to second it, but I've got a question.
Yeah, what's your question?
Um, i- in, in regards to COVID, um, like this will definitely go ahead or is it, um, you know, pending on what happens with COVID and stuff like that? Like, like the Olympic Games aren't going ahead, you know, this, I just wondered if anybody's got some sort of feelings about that?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, um, the Olympics have been postponed by, by twelve months. So they haven't been cancelled entirely, they've been postponed. Um, and these is, uh, the World Cup is scheduled for twenty twenty-three. So hopefully at that point, we'll either have a vaccine or some other way of, um, managing the, um, the impact of, of COVID. So at this point, it's, um, it's going ahead.
I think it's a wonderful initiative and, uh, I thank councillor Caliander for putting it up.
Thank you councillor.
It's three years away. Let's hope it's a different world then. Okay, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page two three three. And it's in the name of councillor Hagerty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, this one, I guess it's two-pronged. Um, the first is, um, uh, for those who are lucky enough to be able to get past the paywall on the Liverpool leader site, you'll see that they've had running coverage of, um, a, uh, New South Wales Parliamentary Inquiry into, um, health services in South West Sydney. Um, some of the stuff that's come out of that is, is, uh, quite, quite disturbing. Um, and I've, I've, uh, listed three of them in the, in the background on my notice of motion. Um, they did a comparison about health, health spending per capita. Um, and for the South West Area Health District, um, we get about eight hundred. Um, other areas get, uh, close to double that. Um, we have the least number of specialist mental health staff and I understand that we have the highest rate of childhood trauma. Um, and, uh, I think last week, or the week before, there was a very disturbing story about the workload on, on junior doctors has, has led to some of them, uh, or has led to a higher suicide rate amongst junior doctors in that health district, just due to the, uh, the workload and the amount of hours they're doing. Um, uh, obviously, uh, the, the state government is investing in, in Liverpool and the, and the, um, health district. And I thank them for that. It, it's, it's welcome and it's, it's, uh, you know, it's overdue, but we, we're very happy to have it. Uh, we're obviously very big supporters of the Health and Academic Precinct. It's going to become a, a very important anchor to our economy going forward. Um, but it's important that with those new facilities and those new buildings and, and the expansion of the precinct, that you have adequate staff, uh, whether it's doctors, nurses or other sort of ancillary health staff. You have those there to, to, I guess, work in those buildings. And, and what we're seeing from this, um, inquiry is that, you know, we, we don't have, uh, adequate, um, health staff. And, and anecdotally, people have, um, spoken to me, uh, about their experiences at Liverpool Hospital. Um, both workers and, and patients about, um, just a, just a, a lack of resourcing in regards to frontline health services. Um, we, and then the other prong is obviously, uh, there's been the, 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 the recent, um, cluster around coronavirus. And, uh, a lot of this stuff is still developing and still coming out. But even if you're a young, healthy twenty-year-old and you recover from it, um, you do end up, you, it, it looks like you appear to have some pretty serious ongoing long-term health effects. Um, severe scarring of the lungs, reduced lung capacity, um, blood clots leading to stroke. In fact, amongst young people, um, when, when a young person comes in with a stroke, they immediately assume now that they've got COVID because that's one of the, the markers and they, they put them on blood thinners. Um, so blood clots obviously leading to brain damage, um, aneurysm. Uh, we've seen in younger kids, um, inflammatory illnesses similar to Kawasaki disease, um, heart arrhythmia. And then, um, I've, I've seen stories of people who have recovered and three or four months later, again, in their twenties and twenties and thirties, uh, previously very, very healthy, healthy people who, uh, have very severe fatigue months and months after recovering from, um, coronavirus. So I guess the point I'm making here is that A, we have the existing problem of, of a lack of, uh, funding on, on the frontline health services. And given that, uh, we've just had a cluster, uh, around coronavirus, we still don't have a vaccine. Um, you know, I, I heard something today saying best case scenario is that we would, we might get a rapid, uh, vaccine out by, uh, you know, sort of autumn, our time next year, that, that's best case scenario, that you have mass vaccination, um, in the sort of second quarter of next year. So given that this is going to be around, around for at least, you know, twelve months, uh, probably double that. Um, people are going to get it, people are going to have long-term health effects. And so the pressure on an already, uh, undistressed health system, uh, will be obviously increased. So, um, what I'm, what I'm asking for here is, is that, uh, you know, as a council, we, we, we do what's, what's necessary to, for our, for our residents and ratepayers and, and we go into bat for them in regards to health. So, um, as I said, I, you know, we're absolutely happy we're getting seven hundred and forty million dollars from, from the New South Wales Government. Um, love the idea of the Liverpool Health and Academic Precinct. Um, but we've also got to back that up with frontline health services. So, you know, more doctors, more nurses, more, uh, he- mental health, um, workers. And so this, uh, this notice of motion is effectively just calling, um, for us to, to launch a bit of a campaign. Um, write to the, uh, you know, write to the state government, um, get right to the federal government. Um, and get our fellow LGAs in, in the, uh, South West Area Health District to, to get on board and, and push with us to, to get a better outcome for our residents. So I hope everyone can support that. Thank you.
Question, Mayor, before a seconder, because I'm, be happy to second it after a couple of questions.
Yes, certainly councillor Chitty.
Uh, through yourself to start. Were the reports confirmed that the hospital site around the airport is now being abolished?
Oops. I have no idea. I'll have to ask the acting CEO whether he has any knowledge of that.
Councillor, I do know they got, the one at Wilton has been scrapped. They did plan to put one at Wilton and that's been scrapped, but I don't know.
No batteries?
There was always plans for a hospital precinct in that space.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard of it being scrapped as yet.
Okay. Right. Just, just in relation, if councillor Hagerty will take it on board in number ten, that we get them to reaffirm that they are going to write, as part of the letters, that that hospital precinct isn't going to be, isn't going to disappear like the others?
Yes, there's a way to word it that is, yeah, I understand what you're trying to say, councillor.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
The ongoing commitment for the further development of a medical precinct.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thanks councillor.
Yeah, we're, we're, I think, for, we're about to put seventy thousand odd people out that way. So we've, you know, we're building a, a country town out that way. Um, country towns have their own hospitals. I think it's only right that, uh, that, that, that new growth area out there has its own, um, health, health, health area, health hospital, whatever you want to call it, medical precinct.
Madam Mayor, I have something that might be able to be included in this.
Yes councillor.
I wonder if the councillors would consider where we say calls on the federal government to increase funding for primary health service in South West Sydney? And also, um, ensures that the, um, aged care facilities and services are well-prepared with, um, personal protection equipment. I just don't want, if, if the worst comes to the worst, I don't want Liverpool to be in the same situation that has happened in Victoria. Where those healthcare, uh, facilities did not have any, um, uh, personal protection equipment and they weren't trained in how to use it. Now, if Liverpool can, uh, we've seen it happen somewhere else, let's make sure it doesn't happen here, if we can.
Um, yes, I calls on the federal government to increase funding for primary health services and aged care in South West Sydney. I think that's, that's, uh, that's all we need to put in there.
Well, and they, uh, do you think we should need in there that, uh, ensuring that the adequate provision with personal, uh, protective equipment and training for that aged care? Because that's what went wrong in Victoria.
Yeah, but I, I think that the issue is just, uh, resourcing and funding of aged care full stop. So, you know, if you, uh, if, if, if aged care facility is adequately funded and, and they've got the right amount of staff and, and the right amount of resources, um, then they don't need to skimp on personal protection equipment. It's, it's about generally resourcing, uh, aged care properly. Um, yeah.
Uh, well, I'm still concerned because they, you know, the news reporting was saying that they had no idea how to use the personal equipment, even if it was there. And, um, y- you know, there was a fair bit of criticism about the aged care facilities in Victoria. So, um, I think that the federal government needs to step up, as they've done now down in Victoria, to ensure that those aged care facilities, um, not only have the equipment, but they've also trained staff in how to use it. So it's, it's a really complicated matter. Um, we, we don't want more aged care facilities. We need them to be, have the right equipment and the right training. So is there?
Yeah, well, I, I think, I think that's the way I've worded it, that, uh, that we're calling on additional funding, calling on the federal government to, to fund, uh, aged care. So that's, that's what I've added there.
Yeah, if the facilities have the right equipment, they, they would assume the right training would follow and the right employees would follow that. Um.
Didn't Victoria, Madam Mayor?
I accept that. I've been following it too councillor, but even if you put this in a motion, I don't think you, everybody will make their own decision. If there's adequate funding, they have to meet those criteria and they're also assessed and they're audited. So an auditing, I would imagine right now, would be very much about the protective equipment in these cen- centres. Um, but it's up to the mover and the seconder to accept your, um, item.
Ma- ma- mayor, I'm not going to, and I'll speak as to why, if that's okay, I.
Yes, certainly, go for it.
I, I get the sentiments and all that. It's, it's easy to go and bash whoever it is, whatever colours in government, whether it's state or federal, more funding, especially around the aged care, which is, um, unfortunately, uh, a big area of concern at the moment. Um, but when it comes to this cor- coronavirus thing, no matter how much money you put into aged care facilities, what we are seeing unfortunately, um, is that people either asymptomatic or with symptoms who can't afford to stay at home are going to work. And that is bringing that into, into the aged care facilities. I mean, when you see, and it's, wha- what we've seen through this whole pandemic is when you see the ACT president and a liberal minister sitting down together trying to work out on issues. And I saw an interview with her yesterday. And, and the concern is, it's not about federal government throwing more money in. It's, the concern is unfortunately, these people feel like they have to go to work because they need to support their families and do what they need to do. They're going in there unfortunately not knowing with symptoms and that's spreading it. So no matter how many masks, how many aprons, how many much money you put in there, people just need to stay at home, especially around the aged care, if they're sick. And you can throw in a billion of dollars tomorrow and somebody needs to go to work, they'll go into work and this thing will spread like wildfire. So, you know.
It's highly contagious.
Madam Mayor, can I make a quick point just on that note?
Yes, certainly.
Um, councillor Chitty is right in that the insecure work arrangements are a key driver of, of people who do go into work when they're not well. But a key way to address that is by extra funding and also improving, uh, the standards. One of the key differences in Victoria has been between the public and private aged care, um, facilities where the number of cases in the, the publicly, um, run aged care facilities has been in the single digits compared to over seven hundred in the privately owned facilities. And the key issue with that has been because of the lack of, um, of, you know, of, of standards in terms of nurse to patient ratios, in terms of the type of allied health professionals you have on site. And those sorts of, um, things like ratios only happen with extra funding. So, you know, we could say we, we can chuck in, uh, as, as much money as possible at it. But unless you chuck money at it, unless you have standards, unless you have nurse to patient ratios, this problem is not going to be addressed. And you can see that just in the difference between the number of cases in the publicly run facilities and the privately run facilities.
Thank you councillor Caliander. I think we've had enough debate. Councillor Rhodes, the mover and the seconder are happy to just add in an aged care, um, facilities. Uh, I think that's as far as we're going to get on that one. You can quite obviously move a foreshadowed motion afterwards if you so choose.
No, this, uh, and so for the councils, there's no purpose, so I'm happy with whatever we can get into.
Is there any opposition to this motion besides what we've just discussed in general? Okay, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next item is toll, Madam Mayor, on page two three five.
Thank you.
Councillor Hagerty.
Um, yeah, I missed that, but, um, uh, yeah, look, this one obviously comes in, um, in, in relation to, uh, the new toll on the old M5. Um, as I've set out in the, in the background to this motion, um, this is a road we've already paid for. Um, it's not getting any, unfortunately it's not getting any upgrades, what it is getting is a new toll. Um, there was no grace period, uh, the M5 cashback scheme won't apply to this section. Um, and it'll go up four percent a year. Um, so either CPI or four percent a year, whichever is higher, uh, given the way the economy's going, that'll be four percent a year for some time. Um, I'm old enough to remember when, um, toll roads finished. Um, I'm, I'm old enough to remember when they took the toll off, uh, when they put the toll on the, on the M4, when they took it off. Um, and the idea that, you know, there was a compact with, uh, the government, the private sector and, and with, with, with taxpayers effectively and, and users of the road was that toll roads, expressways, uh, were much more convenient. They get you to where you want to go quicker, um, but they're expensive and in return, we'll pay a bit of a toll for, for a decade or two. And once it's paid off, uh, the tolls come off. Um, what we've seen certainly over the last ten years is, is, is that models changed? Where tolls have become about how do we keep a really lucrative income stream for private toll companies? Um, and, uh, that's, that, that, it's effectively not fair, that, you know, that, that's the only way to describe it. It's, um, it's not fair, that's not why we pay our taxes, uh, that's not why we should pay tolls. Um, and, and, um, this particular toll on, on the M5 East, um, is, is a, is a perfect example of that. Um, I note that the M5, the proper M5 toll due to finish in twenty twenty-six. Um, I'd love to see the toll come off that, but let's see what happens. Um, the other thing that happens when we used to put tolls on roads was, uh, we'd get a grace period. So, you know, there'd be a month or, or three months or whatever. And we could go and use the new road and we could work out whether that got us to work earlier or not, whether that was our preferred route. Uh, and we could, you know, try before you buy, type of situation, which I, I think is reasonable and fair. Um, we haven't got that with this one either, so we've just had a, a toll slapped on it. Um, and I get that, uh, these kinds of infrastructure projects are expensive. Uh, and I get in circumstances, we need to have tolls in order to pay them back. Um, and we also need tolls as a bit of a market incentive or disincentive to make sure they, they aren't clogged up um, by, by drivers. So what I'm calling for here is, um, essentially that we, we lobby the state government for a toll-free period on the M8, so we can do as I suggested, which is, you know, get used to it, work out if it's quicker to go that way or quicker to go than King George's Road or whatever. Um, and that we scrap the, uh, the toll on, on the old M5 East. We paid for it, um, it's been there for, uh, you know, over a decade. Um, we haven't got any improvements to it, so I don't think we should be paying a toll on it. Um, I, and I'd also like to write to our local MPs and get, get them to support it and also everyone else in South West Sydney because it doesn't just affect Liverpool, it affects other, uh, LGAs in the area. And it also doesn't affect, it doesn't just affect ratepayers and residents, it affects our businesses. Um, we've got the, uh, the industrials, you know, the industrial, um, park or whatever you want to call it, uh, at Preston's. And that's strategically located, uh, right where the M7 and M5 are. Um, for those truck drivers and, 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 and such, as soon as they, you know, they're now going to be slugged as soon as they sort of go into the city now. So that's going to be an, an additional impost on those businesses. Um, and all I'm asking for here is, is a fair go.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Chitty, you had your hand up?
Yeah, oh, yes, I'll bring that. Just some questions for councillor Hagerty and then a couple of suggestions that he may want to take on board. Just some questions for councillor Hagerty and then a couple of suggestions that he may want to take on board. Um, when was it first noted that there'll be a toll on the old road?
Uh, I think it was about two or three years ago and obviously there was, um, uproar then. Um, and, and there's uproar now that it's come into effect.
So before the state election, so people knew the government took that to the election?
Uh, well, given, given the, given the uproar, uh, and given the reaction I've had on, on my Facebook page, I, I don't think too many people were, um, aware of it. And, and sadly, um, that's, that's one of the disappointing things is, is that we, unfortunately, uh, people are very busy and, and become disengaged from politics when people start going Labour bad, Liberal good, Liberal bad, Liberal good, people just tune out. So, uh, I, I think, um, people, a lot of people weren't aware of it.
Through you, ma'am, if I can continue. So toll on an old road uh, would be similar to putting parking meters in the Liverpool CBD where we're just collecting money when the parking spot's already there?
No, that's different. So tolls go on a road to pay it off. Uh, parking meters, uh, go there to, um, stop people parking there all day, um, when they don't need to and, and to get traffic in and out. So businesses have, um, customers constantly coming through the day.
So we, so we could pull our budget, uh, the toll, uh, the meters out of the CBD and it won't affect our income screen?
No, you put, you put, uh, you put parking meters in for a different reason. So you don't put parking meters in to pay for parking spots. You put parking meters in there as a, as a, as an economic, uh, incentive for people to only park there as, as long as they need to. Uh, and to encourage people to catch public transport, uh, and other ways to get into the CBD.
Almost similar to tolls. Ma'am, if I can continue, will councillor Hagerty consider a few things in the motion? I mean, it's easier to just support this so that we, you know, you can do your headlines and everything else, that's fine. Would councillor Hagerty consider?
I'm watching, thank you.
Sorry, ma'am, sorry. I do apologise councillor Hagerty. I'm trying to hopefully, we can all come on board and find a happy medium in support of everyone here. Um, councillor Hagerty, would you consider removing, and I've got a couple of points. Point one, because we all know that when that comment was made, it was referring to a minister who accidentally said toll mania instead of toll road mania. Or road mania. So if, s- something to consider. And in point two, totally agree with your first point in relation to the toll free period on M8. Do you think we have a better chance if we lobby for not the removal, that we put other things forward that we lobby for? One could be the cashback scheme that's currently in place. Uh, two could be the implementation of a off-peak, on-peak, similar to all the other transport modes like, uh, trains and, and buses. So what we're trying to do here is get a result. If we just go in there with a, get rid of it, do you think we'll have much chance, given the business case, given they're relying on the income, given COVID, given everything else that's going on? I'd really like to see a result from your motion.
Yep.
Before either one of you progress, I just want to share some history. The reason the cashback system happened, it was unfortunately had to happen because there was a promise made politically. And the contracts have already been signed, sealed and delivered. So there was no way of cancelling the contracts. So the only way the government of the day could actually fulfil their promise was a cashback system. So you would have to look at the contracts the state, current state government has with whoever they have them with. And that would also determine what you can and can't do. And that's why you have a cashback system, only on a certain part of the M5. Just thought I'd share that with you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right. And yeah, look, I've, uh, I'd, I'd love to get, uh, unanimous or near unanimous support for this motion. So I'm happy to take on councillor Chitty's suggestions. Um, what I'm happy to do is on point one, um, remove everything up until the, the comma. So, uh, so we just leave notes, yeah, so keep going, we'll remove toll mania. Uh, despite, that's what she said, I'm, I'm happy to, in the interest of getting this over, you know, the line, I'm happy to remove that. Um, and we just note that Sydney has the greatest amount of toll road in the world. Um, that's a fact.
So delete toll mania right out of point one?
Yeah. It's a good title though. Um, rights to the state government requ- okay, so in regards to point two, rights to the state government request, requesting a, uh, toll free period on the M8. Um, and, uh, I'm happy to say, um, to use it as an example, so, um.
So you'd want to read something like, we've, we could suggest a continuation of a cashback scheme or an often paid off-peak schedule or a toll free for the old M5 or something similar to ease the financial burden on residents.
Yep. So I'm happy to say, uh, suggesting, uh, either the removal of the toll or a cashback scheme.
Happy to second the motion, ma'am.
Thank you councillor. Any disagreement with this motion?
Can we remove the, I, I don't like the on-peak, off-peak idea.
You don't?
No.
It's a good one.
Uh, suggest the removal of the toll or the, or the, yeah, continuation of the cash, yep, I'm happy with that.
Or other measures to alleviate the financial burden on residents.
Okay, yep.
Can I say it is expensive to use the M's? Okay.
How, how good is it though, ma'am?
Uh, it's good, it depends on what traffic you hit, I have to tell you. Okay.
I'm sorry, can we, the, the word continuation, um, suggests that it's, there is a cashback scheme on that section, there isn't, so.
Just or a cashback.
Yeah, yeah. We could put, we could put a councillor balut on there, that's fine. Joking, we could.
Oh, look, it's a great. That doesn't make sense, Madam May. Suggest.
The best removal of the toll or a cashback scheme or on the old M5 East. Other measures, take the or out, other measures to alleviate the financial burden on residents.
But you want to initiate a cashback scheme, don't you?
Yes.
It could be one, there might be other ways of doing it. It might be own, it might, that's a suggestion, but there could be other.
Can we put in after or? No, sorry, we've lost it. After scheme or, no, toll, sorry, or initiate a cashback?
No, you can't work that way. No, sorry. If, you've got to actually, it says suggest the removal of the toll, one. Or a cashback scheme or on the old M5 East or other, take out the next door. Take out the next door, other measures to alleviate the financial burden on residents. Taking out the wrong law. Further along after old M5 East. Take out all. Take that all, that's it, yep, that's it. All right, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried, thank you. Next one's on page two, three, six.
Uh, withdraw that, Madam May.
Thank you.
Been addressed.
All right, the next item is in your addendum booklet, it's on page nine, three, seven.
Ma'am, I'm happy to move as per the book with, um, some additional points that should be, are you agreeing?
What's your additional points councillor?
Um, they should appear. Um, effectively, it's just in regards to everyone's favourite, um, cultural institution, the, the CPAC and, and also everyone's favourite museum, the regional museum and, and our other, um, cultural institutions in Liverpool. Um, we know they've been hit hard by COVID, um, but, uh, I just wanted to make the point that, uh, yeah, this, this goes to sort of a, a bigger problem, which is that a third of New South Wales population lives in Western Sydney, but we only get five percent of arts funding. Um, obviously that's quite disproportionate. Um, according to the state government's own, um, plans, Parramatta's not part of Western Sydney. So the, the three, city of three metropolis or metropolis of three cities, Parramatta's not part of Western Sydney. Uh, so to that, uh, the relocation of the powerhouse, which is going to cost, uh, nine hundred and forty million and the hundred million development of the Riverside Peter won't actually do much for arts funding in Western Sydney. Um, and so, uh, we should write to the, write, write to the state and federal governments requesting a more, um, uh, more adequate funding that's more commensurate with the amount of people that actually live in Western Sydney. Uh, and again, we get our, our local state and federal MPs on board and, and we also get our fellow Western Sydney, uh, councillors on board.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder?
Ma'am, I'll second if councillor Hagerty will take a couple of points on board. Further points.
What are they councillor?
Uh, one would, uh, one of them is council commit to zero-based budgeting for the next financial year. So the next budget that's presented next year. And the other point, if you'll take it on board, uh, direct the CEO or acting, sorry, direct the acting CEO to undertake an organisational review to identify cost-saving measures. And if I can just explain those two points so they're not misinterpreted.
Yes councillor?
Um, obviously the first one, we've spoken a few times about the zero-based budgeting. I'd really like to see it and given the financial times that everyone's in. I'd really like to see it as part of the next budget that we do, given that we're here for another year. Um, and the second one, um, when I say organisational review, it's not directed to go in there and cull staff, for example. It's just to look for efficiency, efficiencies in the organisation, which will probably be picked up with the zero-based budgeting. But if there's something the acting CEO can do in the meantime till we get through to the budget, um, if there's something in there that we can do differently. We've seen during COVID, uh, staff move around, um, departments and obviously gain more experience. Is there something we can look at? Is there something we can expand? So it's really just looking at the whole organisation and seeing how we can do things better.
Okay, thank you councillor. I think you just spoke to your motion in a funny sort of way. Um, councillor Hagerty, did you wish to speak to your motion?
Well, yeah, happy, happy with the last point. Um, if there's anywhere where we can save money through duplication or efficiencies, always happy to support it. Um, just in regards to the zero-based budgeting, we did have a timeline for that one presented previously. Can I, wait, wait, what? How does, how does that motion track with what was previously, um, communicated?
Well, I'll ask the acting CEO.
Thank you, Madam May. Um, I think the previous discussion, uh, highlighted that while staff were happy to, uh, uh, you know, to adopt a zero-based budget and budgeting approach, that it would be, it would take some time, um, to undertake service reviews across the organisation. Our proposal was previously that it be phased in and I'm happy to go back to the relevant directors and see if that phasing could be expedited in any way.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, yeah, I, I, from memory, I, I, you know, if my next budget, we'd at least have one or two departments that were ready to go for zero-based budgeting based, um, from, from memory. Um, and I think that's consistent with that motion, so.
Can I suggest you add after the next financial year, you put where practicable? That way, if anybody hasn't or isn't able to do it, there's no sort of, um, problem with the resolution.
Yep, okay. Well, that's consistent with what we've previously passed and, um, as I said, happy to, uh, you know, save money where, where, where there's duplication or inefficiency. Um, we've got to add the, what's already in the books to this motion as well. We've actually got to pass a budget.
Yes, that, then they can set rates.
That'd be good.
All right, well, whatever is in the book on page million, um, nearly a million, nine hundred and thirty-seven. Um, and the nine thirty-eight is the recommendation. So that and the recommendations contained on page nine thirty-eight would probably suffice us the next point. I heard that yawn.
Wasn't me.
Wasn't me either. All right, okay, having put that, is there any opposition?
So just to be clear, that, it's that what's there and what's in the book?
That's right, page nine thirty-eight. I'm just trying to get to it as quick as I can, sorry guys. All right, so page nine thirty-eight is the recommendation and those added items.
Not opposition, Madam May, but just as a point, zero-based budgeting also tends to encourage very short-term thinking.
Well, the philosophical discussion, unfortunately councillor is over, given the councillor's adopted it as the way.
Yeah, I get that.
But councils are shifting, uh, shifting sand, so just hold that thought. Okay, I'll put the motion, those in favour, those against, declare it, I'm going to declare it unanimous. If anybody wishes to assist, they can, now is the time. Before we move into the last items, which is the confidential items, I wish to make a presentation. It's an unusual one, given it's at this point in the meeting, but, um, it's been an unusual, we're living in an unusual time. I would like to note that we have our ombudsman, Mr David McGuire, who's unfortunately quite ill this evening. Um, he's retiring and today is his last day. Um, he was first appointed, um, as our internal, first appointed ombudsman. And he's worked in council for over nine years. And he started in council in January two thousand and eleven as a governance officer, a position he's held for four years. And since then, he's worked as our coordinator governance, acting deputy general counsel, acting general counsel, acting head of audit and risk, before moving to his current role three years ago. I don't think he gets much sleep. As the internal ombudsman, David skillfully balances protecting council's reputation with looking after customer, customers and their needs. David's rationale approach, rational approach to difficult matters has been invaluable. A trusted advisor with very high moral standards and ethics, David's enthusiasm has had a ripple effect throughout the whole culture and organisation. David always found a way to achieve a reasonable solution to a very difficult problem. On behalf of council and behalf of you all, I would like to thank you, David, for your passion and your contribution, your time, your energy. And also we hope and we wish you well in your very, hopefully, long and happy retirement. And I hope you remember us all well. Thank you. Okay, moving on to confidential items. The first item is on page eight, three, nine. In your confidential booklet.
Move that away, ma'am.
Happy to second it.
Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is acquisition of, um, drainage purposes in Fifteenth Avenue, page eight forty-nine.
Move that right, thank you, Madam May.
Councillor Shelton, was that councillor Harlow I heard?
Yes, I'm happy to second it then.
Thank you councillor. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next item is the variation of the leisure centre management contract and it's on page eight, five, three.
I move those per the recommendation in the book, Madam May.
I'll stick in that, Madam May.
Thank you councillor Rhodes and thank you councillor Caliander. This one is actually, we have to all have our names registered, so I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, I'm going to declare it unanimous. Thank you. Next item is the animal shelter update, which is on page eight, six, one.
Can we go into closed session, ma'am, on this one?
You can councillor, you can move that. No worries.
Can, can we remove the recommendation off the screen? I'm not sure if that's public at the moment.
Well, yeah, the recommendation, okay. Next item is page eight, sixty-seven.
Um, is that corner five?
Yes, it is.
Happy to move that.
I can second that, Madam May.
Thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carry. Next item is on page eight, seven, three.
Happy to move that too. Sorry, can we, can we move that one into closed session as well?
If you wish, no dramas. Okay, I'll just put an asterisk against them. Next item is Liverpool Civic Place Independent Review.
Madam May, can this please be moved into closed session also?
Yes, certainly, no worries. All right. Having those three items still outstanding, we now move into com- into recording. George, I hope you have the wonderful resolutions for me to read. Back in open session? Back in open session? Thank you councillor, thank you George, sorry. All right, just got to get my ducks, ducks in alignment. In compo four, animal shelter update. Notes that offers as outlined in this report have been made for the purchases of the properties previously identified by the council in a report of the twenty seventh of May twenty twenty. Also notes the temporary arrangements for the housing of impound animals from Liverpool Animal Shelter under the agreement with Rossmore Vets for the provision of animal care and veterinary services. Three, further notes that a report will be provided on or prior to October twenty twenty meeting to provide an update in respect to the permanent future site of the animal shelter facility and hold council briefing to update on the matter and discuss options. With regards to compo six, the council, the council receives the notes report concerning the legal, legal affairs of Liverpool City Council. In compo nine, uh, seven, sorry, um, the council receives a note, civic place independent order report and directs the CEO and management team to implement the agreed management actions outlined in the attached report. They are the motions that have been moved in the closed session. Before we close, I would like to say on a serious note that when we had shut down previously, there were fifty seven cases of the virus identified in council, in the council, the LGA. We have over sixty at this point and we know that there are still community um activity happening. I seriously hope you all stay safe and after your families and friends because this is a very contagious and serious issue.
Madam mayor?
Yes councillor?
Can I please ask that I be recorded as voting against?
Sure, that can be put there.
That was for compo seven and if I could just get one sentence in, as much as.
That's it.
Put it, I can't, or there's no valid question.
Councillor, you get a motion to have your name recorded against it, you don't get a sentence. Okay, so I thank you all very much for um being virtual once again, but please take care and look after yourselves and um make sure that you social distance and continue everything else you have to do. So thank you very much and I'm declaring the meeting closed.